I'm correct. Zoning Board Review is now in session. We are just waiting for at least one more member to have a call. I'm waiting on two. So as soon as either one of those members gets on, we'll do roll call and we'll proceed with the meeting.
We may want to just announce that item number five.
Yes.
There seems to be a lot of people.
I would do that as a matter of fact. If there's anyone in attendance for the West Main Solar proposal, that's going to be continued to our May meeting. Soon as we have enough members, we'll make a motion. But so you don't have to stay on for the entire meeting. Only realize that it's been moved. It is going to be moved to our May 20th meeting. So again, if you're on about the West Main Solar petition, it is going to be continued to our May meeting. Hi, can you view this? Thank you. All right, zoning board review is now in session. We do have five members who will go through roll call. Mr. John Borden.
John Borden, present.
Mr. Ben Furell.
Ben Furell, present.
Eric Raposa is not online as yet. Sue Horowitz.
Present.
Present.
Thank you. All righty. First item on the agenda is the Zoom minutes of December 17th. I have a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Chairman, I've made a motion that be approved the minutes.
Mr. Borden makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Mr. Furell, second. All in favor, by one, by roll call. Mr. Borden approves. Furell.
Furell approves.
Horowitz.
Approved.
Lodeka.
Approved.
And the chairman votes to approve as well. So those minutes have been approved. Next item on the agenda is actually the last item. There's been a request for the West Main Solar II LLC petition. I have a letter asking it to be continued. It says it's addressed to Mr. James Knott, Chairman, Portsmouth Zoning Board Review. Request a continuation of item five, West Main Solar II LLC. Dear Chairman Knott, I represent West Main Solar LLC regarding the proposed solar energy development on West Main Road. That is on tonight's zoning board agenda and I'm ready to ask for continuance to next month's zoning board meeting on May 20th. I cite the planning board heard the West Main Solar LLC project issued an advisory opinion with the conditions. Excuse me, my client would like an opportunity to address those conditions prior to meeting with the zoning board. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely Helen D. Anthony. So could I have a motion to continue the petition of West Main Solar LLC to our regularly scheduled meeting on May 20th?
Chairman, that for all so moves. Second.
Mr. Furell has made a motion to continue the petition. Mr. Borden has seconded. By roll call, Mr. Borden.
Mr. Borden approves the continuance for West Main Solar.
Mr. Furell.
Mr. Furell approves the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz.
I approve the motion.
Ms. Lodeka.
I approve the motion.
Chairman votes to approve the continuation as well. So that has been moved to our May 20th meeting. Is Mr. Raposa on yet?
No.
Okay. All right. The first item on the agenda is petitioned by Lewis and Allison Scarpelli, 75 Water Street, seeking a two-foot, four-inch side yard variance for the purpose of installing a utility shed. Are these Scarpellis on?
Yes.
Okay. If one via phone or video, I'll do you one. Mr. Scarpelli, you want to raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Want to tell the truth?
Yes.
All right, I want to give you a full name and address for Barbara for the record.
First name Louis, L-O-U-I-S. Last name Scarpelli, S-C-A-R-P-E-L-L-I. Address is 75 Water Street in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. 02871.
Okay, Mr. Scarpelli, I drove by the residency the other night. I guess we'll call it a shed. It looks like it's a pump out off of the garage. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you want to tell the board how this came about?
So I wanted to put a utility shed, which is 16 feet by six feet. I think one of the documents said 16 by 16, just as a note. 16 by six feet and no electrical, just for garden tools and things like that. And I did not get a permit until someone stopped by from the town telling me I had to get a permit, at which point I submitted for the permit. And based on my drawings and based on the dimensions that I were able to measure out, it requires, I'm told now, it requires a zoning variance.
You do realize you could have put a 10 by 12 shed three feet from your rear property line? Just throwing it out there?
Yes, sir. You're right. I definitely didn't do this the right way. I spoke to my neighbor, who I thought would be really the only one affected. And he was not concerned. He also, but at the same time though, yes, I did not plan this out very well.
Any questions from the board? Board, no. Mr. Furell, any questions?
No, sir, no questions.
Okay. Ms. Horowitz, any questions?
No questions.
Lodeka, any questions?
No questions.
All right, let me go through the file for any butters or interested parties letters. Don't have anything. Is there any butters or interested parties online that would like to speak to us?
Here are a, if you'd like to give a public comment and you're using the, you have, you can use the raise hand function. If you called on, if you have dialed in, you can dial star nine and it will raise your hand. And after that, you dial star six to unmute yourself.
And seeing no one. All right, Mr. Lewis Scarpelli is before the board for tax assessors map 34 lot 61. A two-foot, four-inch variance for an already constructed utility shed on his property.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if he also needs special use permit for.
Is it a substandard lot of record?
He has 17,000 in a lot of 20s.
Oh, it is. So thank you for catching that.
It's also a variance from the disrupting a shed outside of the.
You know what? Here's the kicker about that. I would consider it a utility shed if it was like separated from the house. But if it's actually attached, I would consider it more of a pump out of the garage. That's how I look at that. Mr. Scarpelli, how do you actually get into that? Can you get into that from the garage?
No, it's not. There's no access. There's a door in the back of the shed itself, but you can't go between the garage and the shed. It's just up against the house. It is nailed to the house, but it's not, there's no access. I'm sorry.
I said it is attached to the house.
Yes, it is. But there's no way to get between the two. There's the wall, the existing wall of the garage is still intact.
Only issue that may raise building code issues.
I know, but it's connected to the house. So we can grant, that's a whole separate thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so you know, Mr. Scarpelli, because of the way this is constructed, it brings up some interesting points is if it was a true shed, you'd be looking for dimensional variance to put it where it's at versus at the rear area of property where you're allowed. Okay? But it's attached to the house, which could be considered in addition to the house or the garage. Because this nailed to it. So that could present a whole nother issue for you regardless of what this board, you know, if the board happens to grant variance, a side yard variance, that's one thing, but it may.
You would still have to go, you'd still have to go for a building.
Yeah, you still, you still have to go for the building regardless.
Okay. I think, now is that what I requested, was a building permit or initially?
Yeah, you probably requested a building permit and they probably said, no, you can't have it until you get a variance.
Yes, okay, I understand. So that had.
I do have to ask you a couple of questions because it is a substandard lot of record. I can point that out. Mr. Borden, so if we allow this, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
I apologize. Can you repeat that question?
I said, if this were granted, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what that means.
In other words, is this going to hinder the fire department from taking care of the house?
No. No.
Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings, your building and the next door neighbors?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood at all?
No, I believe it fits in with the neighborhood and my house itself.
Okay. Recreate lot coverage or setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks in adjacent properties?
When I looked around the neighborhood, I saw similar, in some cases even less setbacks. So from just my observations, I would say no.
Okay. Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so again, Mr. Scarpelli is before the board, tax assessors map 34 lot 61, seeking a two-foot, four-inch side yard variance for the utility shed. I'm going to consider is a bump out from the garage. And also a special use permit for a substandard lot of record. Oh, Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, I drove by the property each day myself, actually. And it looks like it's just a pump out to the house. And it doesn't seem, in my opinion, to be excessive. And I would think that petitioner has more than a mere inconvenience to not be allowed to have this shed. So I vote to approve. Both the, the, I vote to approve shed and a two-foot, four-yard side yard variance. And the special use permit for a substantial lot of record. Thank you.
Mr. Furell. Mr. Chairman, I'd also vote to approve the special use permit for the substantial lot of record and the dimensional variance required to accommodate this shed. That is decided by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Lodeka.
I also vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve the special use permit for a substandard lot of record and the two-foot side yard variance, two-foot, four-inch side yard variance. I do think to deny that variance amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. It is a minimal request. So you've been approved, Mr. Scarpelli. I understand your brother has had a discussion with you about this.
Yes, sir. He did.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a petition by Daniel and Megan Robuski. God, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct. Are the Robuski's on?
Yes, we're voting to.
Okay.
Hello?
Mr. Robuski, join. Eric, for the record, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Eric. Mr. Robuski, I can hear you. I'm just waiting to hear one member.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Robuski, please. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Robuski.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robuski. On the board, seeking a one-foot side yard variance. And I think. And a special use permit for a substandard lot of record. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so let's get the elephant out of the room. The deck is three quarters built already, correct? So how did that come about?
So I was fairly uninvolved with the project initially. Wife and my father-in-law started the build and I had just assumed that plans, you know, someone came knocking on my door. And then turned to minds that were not detailed enough. And my father-in-law kind of kept moving along the project before we were approved.
Had you pulled a building permit in?
Permit. And I was told that. Hello?
And Mr. Robuski, you're kind of breaking up and kind of cutting into that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm not sure. It says my connection is strong, but you're breaking up on me as well. No, before that, a building permit had not been applied for.
Hey, why was that?
To be honest, I don't know. I thought that my father-in-law was going to be, you know, putting in for it since he was the one doing the build.
Right.
And like I said, I didn't know that it wasn't taken care of until Matt came up.
Okay.
And so when I found out, then I started working back and forth with Matt trying to get drawings in and get a building permit approved.
Okay, so you got the point now we have to get the building permit to finish the debt. We need the.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Okay. I don't have any other questions myself. Mr. Borden? Mr. Furell? No questions. Mr. Raposa, any questions?
Not at the time.
Ms. Horowitz, anything?
No questions.
Hello, Mr. Lodeka, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Let me see if we have anything in the file. Mr. Robuski, I do have to ask you some questions because it is a substandard lot of record. So.
Sure.
Special use. This was allowed, would it still want adequate space for fire protection?
Yes, it would.
Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, it would not.
Would it create lot coverage or setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of any adjacent properties?
I believe it would be the smallest setback in the neighborhood, but like I said, by about a foot.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to intermediate neighbor?
No, it would not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any butters or interested parties to this one?
Mike, again, if you're using the Zoom app, please use the raise hand function. And if you're calling in by a star nine, raise your hand. We have a call, Single. Paul, if you could, please state your name and your address for the record.
Single, 46 Northman Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Single, what would you like to tell the board?
I am Dan's next door neighbor and we share that property line. I have no objections to any variance being approved.
Okay, well, thank you very much for voicing that, Mr. Single.
No worries, thank you.
Do we have anyone else? No, all right. Seeing no one, Daniel Robuski is before this board for tax assessors map 24 lot 215. A one-foot side yard variance and also a special use permit for a substandard lot of record. Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner walked through the criteria for special use permit pool and he's met everything under the ordinance. I also drove by the property today and there's substantial distance between the petitioner and the south yard. For it to be a one-foot variance is minimal. A deck is a reasonable request. Access, excuse me, accessory use to primary residence, and I vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special for a substantial lot of record and inside yard variance with reasons cited by the board.
Thank you. Mr. Raposa.
I also, I approve for the one-foot variance.
And the special use permit?
And the special use permit, sorry about that. Having a tough time hearing.
Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you very much. Chairman also votes to approve both the special use permit and the substandard lot of record and the dimensional variance of one foot as requested for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden. So you are all set, Mr. Robuski.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a petition by George and Beth Sylvia for tax assessors map 16 lot 12. Are the Sylvias on?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just getting some error with our video. Can you hear us?
We can hear you. Yes, we can.
I keep getting a fail to start video camera. Please select another video camera. Let me just see. Just bear with me one second.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this should work. Bear with us, please.
Horowitz.
We have to switch cameras to another mechanism. Boy. You might think I don't do this all day long.
Now you know why I retired a year ago.
There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. Delay there.
Okay. So now that we have you on video, could you both raise your right hands, please? Raise your right hand? Did you hear us?
We just lost you. Can you hear us?
We can hear you now. Can you hear us?
Oh, my goodness, this is, this is crazy. Hang on, hang on one second. Please just give us a second here. Wait, I keep losing them. Okay, we're trying again here.
Okay. I just know when you can hear us. I just know when you can hear us.
Action.
Can you hear us now?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Okay, so raise your right hand so you both swear to tell the truth.
Uh, we do.
We do.
Okay, could you individually give your name and address, or Bob report the record?
Beth Hebert, Sylvia, 41 Baker Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
George Sylvia, 41 Baker Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Thank you very much. So, please tell us what you'd like to do.
So, we are asking for a variance to build a, uh, attached garage here on our property on Baker Road. Primary reason for this request is to house our vehicles that are open to the, uh, the extreme weather down here on Baker Road and, uh, need to, uh, provide some shelter and additional storage, uh, for our units, for our house.
And I'm sure as Mr. Boardman has done, I drove the property. I'm very familiar with that area down there, and is it safe to say that there are a number of abutting properties right along Baker Road that all have garages, uh, similar to what you're proposing, correct?
That is correct. We're actually an anomaly down here. We, we're one of the only properties that don't have a garage, and unfortunately, our vehicles have, uh, have paid the price.
I'm sure. Okay, um, it's pretty quick, that to me. I, I don't have any questions. Uh, Mr. Boardman, do you have any? Uh, Mr. Fierl, do you?
Yes, sir, no questions.
Mr. Repose, any questions from you?
Not at this, uh, moment.
All right, thank you. Ms. Horowitz, anything from you?
No questions.
Adique, anything from you?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay, um, let me look into the file. Yeah, I gotta do the special use. No. Nope. Okay, the only other thing I have to go through is because you are a substandard lot of record, I do have to, uh, go through the special use criteria, so, um, if this were allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Okay. Would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, it will match it.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of your adjacent properties?
Before I answer that, I just want to make sure I understand what I'm answering.
In other words, the setbacks you're requesting, okay, are they less than what the average lot has, or is it basically what the average, right?
It'll match. It'll match the neighborhood. It's the same setback.
But it imposes substantial detriment to the public?
No.
Let's hope not.
No.
I just have to ask for any others or interested parties. Do we have anybody, Mike?
Bill Collins, um, okay, Bill's using a older Zoom, so I can't see him.
Okay. Mr. Collins, are you there? Mr. Collins, you have to unmute.
Right, there's all sorts of mute and unmute buttons on these things.
There you go, Mr. Collins, um. Oh, yeah. Could I have your name and address, please?
Bill Collins, William K. Collins, 37 Baker Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871.
Okay, Mr. Collins, what would you like to tell us?
I'd just like to tell you that I endorse this. I think it's a great idea for, uh, Beth and George to do this. Uh, we would love to be able to put up a garage. We don't have a garage. We have a se- uh, we have, we have new septic system instead. But, um, in any event, I think it's a, uh, I think it's a good proj- a project, and, uh, there'll be plenty of room between our houses. We could drive a roof to bus through it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, do we have anyone else? No, okay.
Um, Chairman?
Yes.
There was a, another, our other neighbor did send in a question and answer in, in the chat function just to be recognized, Amanda Carr, 47 Baker Road.
Yeah, I started and answered it. Provided during, uh, the item. It's hard to manage the question and answers.
Says my property of 47 Baker Road is one of the properties that shares a property line. I have no issue with the proposed variance, uh, building a garage, and would ask the Portsmouth zoning board to approve the request. Thank you, Amanda Carr. Good. Okay, um, so, that being said, do we have anyone else?
No.
No one. Okay. So, George and Beth Sylvia before the board for tax assessors map 16, lot 12. They're seeking a special use permit for a substandard lot of record, a 13% lot coverage variance, and a five-foot to the east side yard, um, setback variance. So, Mr. Boardman?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to say that looking at the petition, I don't see a five-foot uh, I'm sorry, yes. You're correct. I, I apologize.
No worries.
Okay, so, I'd like to take the, um, substandard lot of record first. Petitioner walked through the criterion for special use permit for a substandard lot of record, and petitioner has met the ordinance, so I vote to approve. I also vote to approve the five-foot side yard setback to the east and the 13-foot variance, uh, for lot coverage. I'm very familiar with Baker Road. I drove by there today, and there are several properties that have narrow lots and a bunch of water, and it just makes sense to have the garage in the front of the property, in the residence, in the rear of the property, abutting the water. So, I, I think to deny would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Garage is a approved accessory use to the residence, and I vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fierl?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the subs- the variance for a substandard lot of record, the lot coverage variance and the side yard variance of five feet to the east. Thank you, Mr. Repose.
I also vote to approve all three variances, uh, as stated by my peers.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve both variances for reasons previously stated.
Your special use permit?
I, I vote to approve that as well.
Thank you very much. Chairman also votes to approve the special use permit, the lot coverage variance request, and the side yard setback, uh, dimensional variance for reasons previously stated by, uh, Mr. Boardman. So, it's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item on the agenda tonight is a petition by Robert Olympia McCall, tax assessors map nine, lot one, seeking a dimensional variance for a substandard lot of record, I mean, a special use permit for a substandard lot of record, and a special use, um, and dimensional variance, and a special use permit to, uh, build a two-car garage, um, just away from their property. You call on?
Um, I don't see it. I'm not sure if they are under a different name. If, if McCall stood, raised, use the, uh, raise hand function in the app, we can, um, we can take you off that line. So, here we go. So, and if we paper, maybe? Okay, there we go. We have them?
Oh, there they are.
Okay. Hey, Joey.
Mr. McCall, you want to raise your right hand, please? Olympia, you as well?
Can you see it?
You going to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we do.
Okay, individually, can you give your names and address to Bob, please?
Go ahead, Olympia.
Um, Olympia McCall, 117 Massasoit Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
And I am, uh, Robert E. McCall, 117 Massasoit Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do?
Uh, a two-car garage, um, setback off the house.
Okay, and there was a reason it had to be setback off the house. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
That, is that a new septic you got back there?
Well, yes, I have a septic system, and if anything happens to the septic system, um, I like it 40 inches off the driveway. That way there, it'll give me 10 feet for any machinery to come back and put a new septic system in place.
Right, and you're constrained in your rear yard because of the railroad tracks.
Yes, yes.
Hotlines, all that, correct?
Yes, sir. It's right in back of my house.
Now, the one other thing I noticed when I drove down there is, I think it's, uh, one, two, three, four. About five houses to the south of you, which would be closer to Anthony Road, is a house with a similar garage, I think, to what you're proposing. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Gleason, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, all right. Um, beyond that, there are a number of two-car garages, at least I noticed down there. Most of them attached to the house. Um, correct?
Yes.
I don't really pay attention.
Right, so garages are not uncommon in that area?
Yeah.
And not on top, I know.
All right. So, you do this, you require a 12-foot variance to the rear, but of course, that's constrained, um, none to the side, none to the front, five foot to the east side.
Correct.
Okay.
No, sir, it's four foot. It's four, it's four foot, it's four foot to the east side and four foot to the back.
Right, so on the east side, it's four foot to it, so you need a six-foot variance there, correct?
Uh, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, got it. And then a 9.1% lot coverage variance.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
The rear?
Yeah, I got the rear. The rear was 12 foot.
Uh, I think it's actually 16.
Yeah?
20 foot.
Oh, that's right, yeah, 16, got it.
And then it's, it's a nine foot, uh, the nine percent, one foot difference.
Also, it's got 9.19. Yeah. Right. Um, important questions?
Uh, I just want to get calibrated here. I understand the lot coverage variance is 9.19, but just to review the setback variances, I'm looking at the petition and I see four, four feet, 16 inches, to the rear yard. I mean, I just want to get an angle on that dimensional variances.
The back requires 20 feet to the rear.
So, proposed diff- what, what is it? Go ahead, sorry.
So, Mr. McCall?
Yes, sir.
So, um, posted, talking about your rear yard setback, proposed distance to the property line would be eight feet, correct?
Well, off the founda- off the foundation of my house, I own 36 feet. There's another 15 feet before it drops off.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I don't, I don't own, I don't own that property. That is, um...
Okay, so from where the garage is, I, okay, I see it now, got it. Right.
On my house, on my foundation of my house, I own 36 feet straight back.
Yeah, so the garage is going to require, because the garage is set back from where the house is.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so requires a 16-foot variance to the rear. And that's just, then it's just a sheer drop-off behind it, right?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Nar- uh, Narragansett, Narragansett Electric owns that property.
Right, so the odds of anybody trying to build anything back there are like slim to none.
Correct.
I, I just, I, um, I think it's something to do with the flood. I don't, I don't, I don't think they can build down there.
Yeah, well, if they decide to, I'd sell my house quick.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm still confused.
Yeah.
Could walk through the required setback variances?
Yeah, okay, so the rear, the rear yard requires according to the ordinance, a 20-foot rear yard setback.
Correct.
The garage is proposing, okay, will be, uh, four feet from the rear. Okay?
22. Property line.
No, it's 22 feet wide, four foot to the rear of a property line. So he requires a 16-foot variance.
Perfect. So I see plans that's four feet, 16 inches.
Says four to 16, four feet to 16.
So, and so the petition is for a 16-foot variance.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And are, are there any other?
The only other one is the east side where, uh, he's going to be potentially four feet from the side yard, so we require to be
Five foot?
Six foot.
Six.
Right. There's also a variance to, for a semi garage.
Because of there's one built into the house. Mr. McCall, that, do you actually use the garage as a garage? Because when I was there, the garage is under the house.
Yes, yes.
We, we have a garage, but we can't really fit a car in there.
No, you can't, yeah, you can't fit a car in there and, uh, turn into the garage is, is so bad, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, it looked awful small today.
Yeah, yeah. That's more of a storage shed than a garage.
Yeah, my lawnmower, stuff like that.
I think it took a little bit of patterns. Okay, if I was narrow, it's narrow, could be that one, no, no. Okay, yeah, so. Anything else, Mr. Boardman, or?
No, I'm kidding.
Okay, um,
just, you walk through the special use permit.
Yeah, I'm going to do that. I'm going to wait till all the other members.
Okay.
Mr. Fierl?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to be a pest.
It's okay. Mr. Fierl?
Yes, sir, no other questions.
Uh, Mr. Repose, are any questions?
Uh, no questions, pretty straightforward.
All right, Ms. Horowitz, any questions?
No questions at this time.
All right, Mr. McCall, I do have to go through the special use criteria, so, uh, if allowed, would this still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes, I think so.
Would it provide adequate light and air between the buildings?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm pretty sure it would.
It alter the character of the neighborhood at all?
I think, I think it would look good.
Could create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average of what's adjacent to you?
No, not really. I mean, there are, I mean, obviously, it's common fence point, so there's a lot of properties nearby that, you know, they look like they're living on top of each other. I mean, we're, we're pretty fortunate that we actually do have space between us and our neighbors.
I think we have a, a, a good-sized lot. It is, um, it is 80 by 90.
Yeah.
It is bigger than average lots. The house next to me, it's only, you know, um, you know, it's only 60 by 80, so.
Right, would it, uh, would it impose a detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good. All right, I just have to ask for others or interested parties and check the file. So, I do not see any letters or anything in the folder.
Members of the public, if you'd like to give some comments, again, please, uh, use the raise hand function and Zoom app.
Don't see anyone. Okay. So, Robert Olympia McCall before the board, tax assessors map nine, lot one. Uh, they are seeking a special use permit for a substandard lot of record. They are seeking a 16-foot rear yard setback, six foot, uh, to the east side setback, and a 9.19% lot coverage variance for the purpose of installing a two-car garage on their property. for the purpose of installing a two-car garage on their property. Mr. Boardman?
Chairman, I will uh address the special use permit petition, and in my opinion, petitioner walked through all the criteria and the ordinance with the chairman, and I vote to approve. In regards to the rear yard setback, uh, sixteen-foot variance, in my opinion, I think it's a reasonable request. I vote to approve, I also vote to approve the east side setback request for six-foot variance, as well as a nine-point-one-nine percent average variance, given the fact that the lot size is seventy-two hundred, which is very minimal. Our ten, so I vote to approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the subs- the variance for the standard lot of record, the rear yard setback variance, the side yard setback variance, and the nine-point-one-nine percent lot coverage variance. If I can support you.
Thank you, Mr. Repose.
I also vote to approve all four variances for reasons stated by Mr. Furell.
Thank you very much. Horowitz?
I vote to approve all four variances for reasons previously stated.
Thank you, the uh chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated for both the special use permit, uh, the side and the rear yard uh variance, and also the uh coverage. So I think it's a reasonable request, and it fits in with the character of the neighborhood, and I think the calls will do a good job, so you've been approved.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, could I have a second?
Second to the to the motion.
Okay, Mr. Boardman? Furell?
Mr. Boardman approves.
Mr. Furell? Mr. Repose?
I also approve.
Ms. Horowitz?
Vote to approve.
Wadika?
Vote to approve.
Chairman also votes to approve as well, so, thank you, folks, we'll see you next month.
Have a good night.
Thank you, good night.